Good evening and welcome to the city council meeting. It's January 28th of 2020. First item of business would be the roll call.
Bartlett.
Here.
Boersma.
Here.
Caravello.
Here.
You.
Here.
Holly.
Here.
Hirsch.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Legaki.
Here.
Reeves.
Here.
Riley.
Here.
Schumacher.
Here.
And Maske is absent and excused.
Thank you, Holly. Next item would be communications. Are there any communications from Alders this evening?
I saw a lot of great, great helping from neighbors, helping neighbors with the really heavy snowfall that we had over the weekend, so it was good to see.
Alder Person Harley, are you about to do the Whitewater thing?
Yep, going for it.
Okay, tomorrow night at the high school, there's Whitewater Park Public Meeting for public input, and there'll be a couple different types of information there. There's the Mad Park Master Plan and the Whitewater Park Planner as well. Am I missing anything?
Yes, there'll be people from Dane County talking about the new trails going in on RDA site and what we're proposing around it, the Whitewater Park in general, and the hydro study that we did, the sediment study that we did. Dan will probably, he's done a great job preparing this, so we'll have lots of information, and we want everybody there to give us their input and to get educated on what a great opportunity this is for the city. So, it's at seven o'clock at the high school tomorrow, Wednesday, the 29th.
Okay, thank you. Any other communications from Alders? And I just have one quick update for the Alders. I wanted to let you know that we did finalize the language between the City of Stoughton and exclusively roses on the property they'll be purchasing. So, we're waiting for closing on that property, and then we'll be bringing plans to, as they come forward, but basically, it's good to go. That's all I had. And is anybody else, one last chance for council members? Seeing none, we'll go into our presentations. We're gonna have a presentation tonight about a Stoughton Community Network Conference, and Brenda Zarath and Sharon Mason Boersma are here tonight. They're gonna go through a presentation and let you know about an upcoming event.
Thank you very much. So, Sharon and I are on the committee. We're a project of the Social Concerns Committee and Friends of Christ Lutheran Church, and then we have a partnership with the VA Hospital of Madison. They're presenting their whole health program at our event, and I only have like five minutes worth of slides, so if you want to stop me, please feel free to go ahead, and we'll just discuss things as they come up. But it's going to be a very fun conference. So, the idea came from the Social Concerns Committee of Christ Lutheran Church. We were just brainstorming projects that we'd like to take on in 2020, and churches are often doing that. I mean, you have churches, you have Boy Scouts, lots of philanthropic groups that are always looking for projects. So, our idea was to come up with helping homeless children in the school district. We heard that there were like 35 to 70 families in the school district that are homeless, and we wanted to come up with some plans for that. So, light bulb came off in my brain, and I thought, you know, you've got service providers always looking for resources, social workers, whatever, and then you've got churches, clubs, and philanthropic groups that are always looking for a project. So, what if you put them together? So, I went to this conference, Building Communities from the Inside Out, that John McKnight presented at in Spring Green about 10 years ago, and it's on asset-based community development. And they created this book, which I have a copy for you to have, and it has individual assessments that you can do with people. It goes into what churches can do within a community, different organizations and associations. It's really a good workbook and a toolbook. So, yep, so whoever wants the book can have the book, but it's for the city. So, you take people that are already involved in the community, and you learn more about their assets, skills, talents, and interests. Then you use this knowledge to connect the assets to the current and future needs of the community. Projects get started and carried out by individuals and groups are more likely, and following their passions are more sustainable oftentimes in programs funded by grants and run by paid employees. You obviously need grants and funds, but it's a lot of times the passion of individuals that help to sustain the programs. So, sustainability would look like, you know, community building involves the city, school, businesses, churches, organizations, associations, and you identify a wish list rather than a problem list, and then you collaborate to make those things happen. So, our Stoughton Community Networking Conference is really Phase One. So, we get all of the churches, we've invited about 250 people so far. There'll be about 300 that we invite. We hope 200 come, and it'll be an event really to get to know you. So, we get together on 4/25. We share knowledge, experiences, getting to know you, and a lot of it's, you don't know what you don't know about somebody. So, we get, we'll have tables of eight where you have one person from each area. You know, the areas might be like housing, transportation, social workers, church groups, legal employment, health. You get one of each of those together at a table of eight, and you brainstorm community concerns like housing, transportation, employment services, and client support. The topics have actually come from the strategic planning of the city, the library, the Stoughton School District, the hospital. We've taken all the strategic plans of all of them, and we're in alignment with all of them. We totally support all the programs that are currently going on. So, at this conference, or before the conference actually, when you do the Survey Monkey to Register, we're asking for personal skills, talents, and interests, because we want your, what you're passionate about, what you're interested in about, because that's, again, what creates the sustainability. So, people might have an interest in carpentry, and then those carpenters would basically be put into, or everybody be put into basically a telephone book, an electronic telephone book, that would help connect the needs of the, of the city with the assets of the city. So, success of the conference would just be everyone having a good time, getting to know the community better, filling out the Survey Monkey, giving us the information, and then hopefully, we develop Stoughton Networking Google Groups online forum where everybody could share assets and needs in real time. So, if the Boy Scouts are looking for a project, or a church is looking for a project, they know what actually might be most appropriate to, to put their energies into. And then the third part would be to develop a mentoring program. Oftentimes, social service agencies have clients that, you know, you kind of need someone to kind of hold their hand, help them through, through, through life a little bit. Maybe they had a challenging background, but they just need life skills education. So, we would train mentors and hopefully connect them to provide some longer ongoing support. This is kind of what support looks like right now. You have the Wellness Coalition, you have advocacy groups, alcohol and drug, legal, employment, faith, housing, transportation, and health. So, you take that, and then you just add, oops, I missed my slide, but then you add all of the Boy Scouts and churches and, you know, Kiwanis Club, Rotary Club, things like that, that also fit into the equation. Okay, so, significant community development takes place only when local community people are committed to investing themselves and their resources in the effort. So, and hopefully, this would benefit the communities like the Riverfront Project. So, if you get some passionate people involved, hopefully, that would support your projects. So, you connect assets in ways that multiply their power and effectiveness, harness local institutions that are not yet available for local development purposes, and things like, you know, a lot of the clubs are underutilized, hopefully, like I said. Then clubs that we have, we talked about Kiwanis, Rotary, Lions, Lionesses, the list, the invitation list came from the Stoughton Area Resource Guide, the Chamber of Commerce members, all of the churches, and then all of these service organizations that we can identify. The assets will be, like I said, documented through a Survey Monkey for registering. The questions on the Survey Monkey are, what personal and professional organizations, associations, clubs, and groups do you belong to? And then primarily, we're looking for personal and professional skills and talents. What are your personal and professional interests? What do you care about the most? Because people who follow their passions and interests are more committed to a project and contribute greatly to its long-term success. And then what do you want people to be concerned about in Stoughton? And then do you have any comments, questions, or concerns? Anybody have any thoughts?
So, what do we have here?
So, that is your invitation, and then you take that invitation. You also have a copy of the program. There's gonna be four, basically breakout group sessions. That'll be small groups of eight where we'll be discussing and brainstorming the projects. It is an all-day conference, but if you can't be there for all day, that's not a problem at all. Part of the Survey Monkey is checking off what, what times you'll be able to attend. The VA is presenting their whole health program at nine o'clock. Their whole health program is moving more into the community. The VA is working on, looking at relationships that their patients have and how they interact with the community and supporting what the patients want. So, instead of saying, "How are you feeling today?", they're saying, "What matters to you?". And then they're basing their care on what matters to their clients. It's actually a really cool, really cool approach. So, they'll be presenting at nine, then we have two breakout sessions in the morning, a free lunch, it's a free conference, and then two breakout sessions in the afternoon followed by wrap-up. Yep.
Yeah, Brenda, I noticed that you mentioned Kiwanis and Rotary. There are a number of others, including Lions and Optimists, and just, just so we're aware that those are other organizations, especially the two primary VA, well, Veterans Groups, two American Legion, and, and the...
Yes, we've invited the VFW and the American Legion.
So, those would be integral to this, I think.
Absolutely. It's, it's challenging to actually find the volunteer organizations. So, you know, we've gone through the Chamber List, we've got the, the Community Area Resource Guide, but those little 501(c)(3)'s and clubs are often not easily identifiable. So, part of this project would be to identify them and pull them more into the community efforts and help them, help us get to know who they are and what resources, you know, what assets they have, what talents and skills they'd like to provide.
Alder Person Riley.
Thank you, Mira. How is it that you go about identifying people who could benefit from this program? Those, those who might be in need of the program?
So, we're working closely with the social workers. Sharon actually helped create this, the, so actually, any social workers, the senior center, the hospital social workers.
The Start Program.
Yep, Start Program. Cindy's been very instrumental. She's actually helping contribute a lot to the Invitation List. I just met with her yesterday. So...
Hospital, mhm.
Schools, I presume?
Absolutely, schools, yep. Yep, school, city, hospital, even the assisted living facilities, nursing homes, they're invited. And anybody else that we can think of as we go?
Yeah, social service agencies, you know, would know the needs, we hope, and, and anything else, any other agencies as well.
Thank you. Okay.
Any other questions?
This is exciting.
I knew you were gonna ask a question.
It's a comment. This is exciting. It really, really is exciting.
Well, and it's, it's, it's optimist. It's, it's strengths-based as opposed to problematic.
Absolutely. We're looking at our, we have issues, our challenges, our opportunities. So, we're taking challenges, turning them into opportunities. This really fits in with what works for Wisconsin and Healthiest Wisconsin 2020. So, I'm hoping it would be just really cool if we can get this going and taking off to connect it to the county, connect it to the UW system, connect it to the state and the public health department. So, there's a lot of room for a lot of growth, and if we could even be an example with the VA of what working with the community looks like, that would be really cool. So, I have some huge dreams, and if we could just keep going on this, but you gotta start somewhere.
We, Brenda, is gonna do a presentation to the Key Club at the Stoughton High School, and we're gonna ask them also for their help in doing some work for this conference. And so, given the school, that'll be our connection to the, the school. So, you know, trying to get other people to help us are also, that's making connections.
The challenge right now is creating a really strong infrastructure that can be built upon. So, I really, yeah, I'm hoping the Key Club will be able to help with that. The leadership through the, I think the hospital has a leadership program to help create the computer infrastructure, online infrastructure.
Alder Person Schumacher.
So, this, this big list that you're assembling of people that'll be involved with that, you're, you're administering and, and keeping that list then?
Yes.
How would anyone else be able to see?
You know, I'm trying to figure that out. Right now, it's in a Google Doc, and I can, I can share it with anybody. We can kind of grow it exponentially. I am trying to figure out, I'd like it to be sort of an online telephone book that would be accessible by all, but I have to make sure that we don't accidentally delete it somehow or make change, you know, make dangerous changes. So, as my technology level grows, that's definitely something we're working on, but we want it to be accessible by all, just like an electronic phone book.
Okay.
Excellent. Anybody else?
I hope you can come.
Thank you.
Yes, please do come. I think it's gonna be, and it's free, and free food, and we're a great place to eat. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night. All right, the minutes and reports are in the packet. Public comment, is there anyone here to speak for public comment tonight? Seeing none, we'll go into the consent agenda. Looks like we have three items on there this evening. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I will approve.
Second. Motion by Boersma, second by Johnson. Would anybody like anything removed from the consent agenda? Alder Person Hirsch.
Yeah, but I'd just like to see item number C, just the, about the census just moved out, just 'cause I wanna learn more about what's...
Sure.
...it involves. There wasn't a lot of information in the packet, so...
Okay, we'll pull that one out, act on it separately. Anything else? Otherwise, we'll have a motion and a second for A and B. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. So, entertain a motion for C.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Alder Person Hirsch, a second by Alder Person Harley, and you want us to, Holly is in charge of this one. She went through a training for census, and then we've had some interested parties that are willing to participate in this. I'll let Holly cover the rest.
So, basically, the Complete Count Committee, a lot of municipalities are doing this. It's a way for us to get the community involved and get them information, and get them accurate information. So, essentially, the committee is going to be myself, the library, the senior center. We're hoping for a participant from the school and possibly the chamber. What the committee does is they look for ways to get information out about the census. If someone were to have questions about it, be a resource for those people. 2020 is the first year in which the census is going to be promoting people to take it online. So, starting mid-March, you will start to get postcards inviting you to take the census online. This is new for a lot of people, so we're just gonna be a resource for the community to ask questions if they need them, if they need help.
I think that the main thing is, is we just wanna be able to communicate to people and get participation, and also let people know that there's, there's gonna be people literally knocking on doors, I think, from the census, and let people know that they're gonna be coming and what they need to do to make sure that they feel comfortable that the people they're talking to are legitimate.
Yeah, that's correct. So, starting, starting mid-March, the census will send out the initial notification inviting you to take the census online. It'll also have information about how to request a paper copy of the census like there was in years prior. There's no such thing as the long, short, the long form or the short form anymore. It's just one form, or you can take it over the phone as well. If you don't respond to that initial notification in March, after April 1st, they will start... After April 1st, they will send you another notification. If you don't respond to that, then they will be sending census workers to go door-to-door. So, the, the biggest, I guess, point of the committee is to get that information out to people. We're looking at ways to use social media, to use, you know, however we can to get as many people as we can in Stoughton counted. Not only does everyone deserve to be counted, but it also, it helps us, it helps the schools with funding and things like that, so...
Well, thank you very much. I, I learned a lot, and so I'm glad that we brought it out, and I think it's a great idea to actually involve the community as much as possible.
I agree.
So, thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you. So, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments related to item number C? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, that completes the consent agenda. There is no old business. We have some new business, and the first couple items are coming from the Public Safety Committee. Alder Person Johnson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Public Safety Committee, I'd like to bring forward Resolution 13-2020, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve a temporary Class B, Class B retailer's license and special events license for Stoughton Chamber of Commerce, and we'd so move.
Second.
It is annual, something we do every, every year for the chamber. Chief has no problem, and I don't believe that Holly and Clerk's Office has any problems, so...
Okay, and Kelly's here, if anybody has any questions. She's here representing the chamber tonight.
I told her we'd try and be easy on her.
Be easy on her?
Yep.
Come on up and tell us about what's new and greatest and latest this year.
The best thing is there's not a lot of new things. So, everything that has happened, it's set in mind the past few years, it's status quo, as should be explained in my special event packet here.
Okay, any questions? Alder Person Boersma.
Yes, I have two primary concerns tonight about this proposal to allow a special license to board the Seton MI Committee. I'm a social worker of longstanding and have worked with numerous families who have had issues with alcohol. My first concern is that Seton MI is a fairly important sacred holiday in Stoughton. Many families and kids come to this holiday celebration every year, and these are both kids from our community and also from other community that come with their parents. I don't think a beer tent is necessary in our community at Seton MI. It's a, it's a family holiday, and I think it's an important one for, actually, for us. I think the main concern is that, I think that we have a culture of this being a family holiday, and I think changing a culture for, especially kids, is something that we have to be very careful about. We have lots of kids come. I've had some concerns, especially with the beer tent in the past, where people were served when they were clearly intoxicated, and it certainly can be a real problem. I'm concerned that, you know, we use best practices, no matter what we do, but I just think that we just don't need that in this community. The other, the other one is that I think we have a number of bars and taverns in town that serve alcohol during that, that week and pretty much every other time during the, during the year. And I think, I don't think we raise a lot of money in Seton MI. I used to be on Seton MI Committee, and I know that it wasn't a great moneymaker, but it clearly was, it clearly was a lot of work, and it was a lot of, a lot of concern raised by at least some of the Seton MI Committee. Historically, what happened is that with, in the Seton MI Committee, there was, in the trend, it was about five years ago, maybe, maybe eight years ago, something like that, and I know that a lot of the Seton MI Committee turned over after that because we had a split ideas as to whether this was a good idea or not a good idea. Clearly, I was on Seton MI Committee, and I was one of the people who left that community, that committee. Because of the change in culture, I think that we are advocating through, with the beer tent, I think it's just not a good idea. I know that, I'm a broken record and a revolving record on this, but I, I just think that it's just not necessary. We don't need it, it's not good for our community. I think it, I think it doesn't reflect well on us, and, and we have, we have plenty of other time that we can do this, but this particular one is, is really important. I think that we have to be very concerned about a beer tent on, at Seton MI. That's my thought. And, and I, I won't go through this on the next item, but it also applies to the Coffee Break Festival. I don't think we should be, you know, we should be having a coffee and beer festival for, so...
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from Alders? Seeing none, all in favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed?
A hearty no.
That motion carries. Next, Resolution R14 also comes from Public Safety.
Nothing I'll say is, it is consistent. Nothing I'll say is, it is consistent.
That's right.
Public Safety brings forward Resolution 14-2020, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve a temporary Class B, Class P retailer's license and special event license to Stoughton Chamber of Commerce for coffee breaks, and I would so move.
Second.
Second by Alder Person Hirsch. Alder Person Johnson?
Same thing, annual event. I think the chief will confirm that we haven't been, had any issues, and I don't think Holly had it either, so...
Okay. Any questions or comments from Alders? You said you were done with that one.
I, I intend to spare you, but we'll raise a hearty no for this one.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
A very hearty no.
That carries. I guess I'd like to skip down to item 13 and 14 if we could, so I can get Park and Rec Director to land in and out of here. Both of those are coming from the Finance Committee, so R20 would be the first one.
Hold on, you skipped up on me there.
Yeah, I have a way of doing that. It's all right.
All right, Resolution 20-2020, approve setting park shelter and athletic fees, athletic field fees, park shelter fees to be set at $60 for residents, $80 for non-residents in 2020, and $70 for residents and $90 for non-residents in 2021. Athletic field fees would be set at $5 per player, per season for sanctioned organizations, $20 per hour for individual residents, and local unsanctioned nonprofit resident organizations, and $40 per hour for individual non-residents and outside nonprofit organizations. Ball field lights would be set at $25 per hour, and so moved.
Second. Second by Alder Person Johnson. Anything you want to expand on? I know this went through parks as well, so Alder Person Hirsch could fill in the blanks, and then Dan's here as well.
All right, I'm gonna go right over to Dan with this one, that one was...
I'll, I'll start with the history of it, and there's two parts, obviously. There's the athletic field fees, and then there's the shelter fees. So, I'll start with the athletic field fees. Historically, the city's always had contracts with the local sport groups, so like Stoughton Area Little League, Stoughton Area Baseball Associations, Don U-Sup, there's a soccer organization as well. So, these groups have a contract to use the city fields, and they pay $5 per player fee. And there's also other requirements in these contracts as far as like park improvements, they have to waive fees for people who need the fee waiver, those types of things. So, there's, there's really no change with those groups. They just fall into a, they fall into a sanctioned group now, or sanctioned organization, and this is the way other communities are starting to handle it now, because they're getting other requests from other groups outside of the city, and they're using, they're using the fields. And we're, we're changing over to a new reservation system that will let us better manage the field space, so we're hoping to have these groups coexist, but we also wanna make it so that the community groups have a discounted rate... But we also want to make it so that the community groups have a discounted rate where they keep...
Of availability?
No, if the fields are open, they're not reserved, they're free to use.
And that just wouldn't change that in any way?
No, this is for athletic fields, like soccer fields, baseball diamonds, tennis courts, or pickleball courts, or anything like that.
So, this is for like an organized activity. So, if you have a baseball team that wants to use the fields, you'd be paying the fee to make sure you have that space, and you can organize a practice or a game.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, hardy opposes, so that carries. Item number 14 comes from Finance, and that one went through Park and Rec as well. Alder Person Schumacher.
Resolution 21-2020. Approve the director of parks and rec to enter into an agreement with MSA Professional Services to complete an ADA transition plan for city parks and park facilities with costs not to exceed $23,800. So moved.
Second.
Second by Alder Person Haley. Anything you want to add? Alder Person Schumacher.
Just getting the plan set in place for the ADA compliance in there, and let Dan fill in more information with that one.
Yeah, so we had two proposals, one from MSA and one from Ayers. They both have recent experience working in our park system. They were actually within $100 of each other, and MSA was lower of the two. Their proposal was for the $23,800, and it was budgeted in the CIP for $26,000. What the ADA transition plan is, they'll do an audit of the park systems and the public facilities in the parks that are open to the public, and they'll look for deficiencies. And what they'll do is they'll give you solutions to the deficiencies, so they're up to ADA standards. And they'll put together a phasing plan for you, so you can do it over a number of years.
I think what we found is when Park and Rec Committee went through their park and open space plan, there was a number of items that were identified in the plans that were deficient when it came to ADA accessible. And what this does is it really helps us put a plan together, and then we can start, you know, chipping away at and doing the projects as they come along, and we can budget for them in the CIP and prioritize them. I know Dan's already done some things. I think you're expecting to do some things at Troll Beach this year, and then some of the parks, but this really gives us a more comprehensive look at it. Any questions or comments? So, this is just to do the study, and then there'll be implementation dollars that'll be needed at some point, right?
Yeah, it'll be a working document that you'll use.
All right, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. That carries. Thanks, Dan. We'll go back to item number seven. Seven, eight, and nine all came from the Plan Commission. Alder Person Caravelo.
This is...
R15.
R15-2020. Approving a certified survey map for property at 1111 Veterans Road, owned by STI Holdings Incorporated of Stoughton, Wisconsin, and I so move.
Second.
Second by Alder Person Bartlett. Alder Person Caravelo.
The owner of this property, which is Stoughton Trailers, or STI, is requesting to split the property into two parcels to allow development of Lot 2, which I think is the, a northeast piece of the property as illustrated there. And I believe, actually, if I can add, I think yesterday we learned that, or this was the first time I heard, but it sounds like their intent is to add a facility, another business that will be providing a process that's involved with the manufacture of trailers, like a galvanizing process for some of their steel components.
That's correct. Anything you want to add? Director Scheel.
Just to remind the council, there was a similar one, a CSM that had been submitted a few months ago. That never got recorded. Their site requirements changed slightly, so this is a revised CSM that they're submitting for approval. It meets the conditions for the zoning district.
Any? Alder Person Hirsch?
Excuse my cold, that just started like an hour ago. When you split this property and you have another business in there, I thought I read somewhere that they were trying to deal with the traffic problem or the parking problem that Stoughton Trailers already has. Is that still true when this other business is going in there? Can you please explain, or...
I can just expand. They are actually doing onsite improvements to get staff parking off the street. In this northwest corner of the site is being converted to, from staff parking to trailer parking. And they're creating an environment along the front area, along Veterans Road, with an expanded off-street parking area for staff. They're also expanding the north lot here for their staff. This separate entity would be responsible for identifying and providing off-street parking for their operations.
Okay, so that's different than this part of it. Okay. All right, thank you. Great explanation.
All right, any other questions or comments? Here, Alder Person Jensen?
Just a concern, Rodney. How, I guess, well, if it's a galvanizing process, I mean, I'm sure that there's some environmental issues that we have to be addressed. How are those going to be addressed?
We haven't had a submittal based on the operation. There's conversations that are starting to occur about what will be there. Obviously, they're gonna have to meet any state and federal requirements for any emissions, if there are any.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. That carries. R16. Alder Person Caravelo.
This is R16 of 2020 approving a conditional use permit request by Ross Perici for Rossi's Pizza, a pizza restaurant at 1312 Hamilton Street, Stoughton, Wisconsin. And I so move.
Second.
Second by Alder Person Riley. Alder Person Caravelo.
These folks would like to convert the structure, the building at 1312 Hamilton Street, which was previously, I believe, a dry cleaners drop-off, and actually, most recently, I think it was a pawn shop buy-and-sell type operation. And they will be creating a business, which is very much like, from what I understand, one that they operate on Manona Drive in Manona currently.
Any questions or comments about this one? Maybe, Rodney, if you just want to explain why they need a conditional use permit?
Really, it's converting it to, from a use that was permitted in the district to one that's conditional in the district. The restaurant is conditional in this particular zoning district. That's why it's before you at this point, as Alder Person Caravelo has pointed out. It was previously a retail and service location. Now, it's being converted to a restaurant. Therefore, the use dictates the requirement for a CUP.
Alder Person Boersma.
Yes, I'm really familiar with this site. I was just wondering if, I know that there was a drive-through available to, when it was a dry cleaning business. I'm wondering if there, anybody knows whether or not they're gonna be using that as a drive-through to pick up items?
The answer is no.
And secondly, whether or not there's any concerns for safety for the use of a drive-through, if that's gonna be the case.
Drive-through is being discontinued. They indicated they don't plan to utilize that as a drive-through facility any longer, so I think that answers kind of both of the questions.
Thank you.
And I would add that they're gonna, they're gonna have an arcade in there, and they've indicated they don't intend on having any alcohol there. Alder Person Hirsch?
I just, this is kind of like a public health thing. If it was a dry cleaner facility, and now it's converted into a restaurant, do they have to do any remediation or make sure that it's actually, it's been cleaned out enough that there's no floating around chemicals that were used in the dry cleaner that now can actually cause a public health issue with food?
They're responsible to do any investigation such as that. I think it was described that the operation of the cleaner was not the intensive dry cleaning operation here like you find at some of the past facilities. So, there might not be that exposure that you're describing.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. That carries. Item number nine, Ordinance 1, first one of the year of 2020. Alder Person Caravelo, this is the first reading.
All right, this is Ordinance 1 of 2020. An ordinance amending the zoning classification of certain lands located within a proposed preliminary plat named The Meadows at Kettle Park West and Outlots 1 and 2 in a proposed certified survey map in the city of Stoughton from RH Rural Holding to SR5, Single Family Residential, MR10, Multi-Family Residential, PD-GDP, Plan Development, General Development Plan, and I Institutional. And this is the first reading.
Everybody catch all that? Alder Person Boersma.
Yeah, I just wondered, does the zoning include the controversial thing we talked about last time? Which was the not building on a section south of...
I think this is more of a zoning issue, and that's more of a development agreement. Conversation is probably the easiest way I put it. Do I, Rodney?
I'm wondering if the zoning applies to that particular area.
I think it applies to everything. It applies to everything, right?
Correct. If I may, this just graphically shows the areas to be rezoned. The area that you're describing is from this point south. It does rezone those lands to accommodate the park land as well as the residential components that would be put into this area in the future and this institutional piece.
Did you have a follow-up, or anybody else?
Yeah, I just, I just, just so it's clear that because it's being rezoned, we're not, we're not just giving permission to...
Yeah, I think we have the direction from this body of what you want to see in the developer's agreement. So, when we get to that point of the conversation, we'll have that follow-up.
Thank you.
Alder Person Hirsch?
Just one other comment. Is there a way to, I think, Phil had talked about it before, but the naming of the streets, are they definitive? So, there's a toll mark court, a toll mark circle, a toll mark lane. Can they think of any other names besides just toll mark? That'd be a little confusing, especially if there's a 911 call or something like that.
Go ahead.
Yeah, that direction was provided to the developer, the need to review the names and review them with the city as part of the final plat that has to be submitted. That would be reviewed by the City Council before it would be signed. We acted on a preliminary plat with a number of conditions on it. One of those conditions was to revisit the street names that potentially were conflicting with other locations.
Yeah, I mean, just pull out a map of Norway and pick some other names out there would be nice.
I don't know if they're taking suggestions or not, but if you have a few, we'll forward them to them.
I'll pull out my map.
Alder Person Gocke.
Just jumping back to the last meeting of even the title of this project as well, the concerns for it being confused with another Meadows. Is that title also being reconsidered, or is that definitive?
I don't know that there's any effort to actually change the plat name. The Meadows is a facility within the Kettle Park West development. This is a development section within the plat as well. So, I don't know if the distinction is gonna be problematic.
Any other questions? This is the first reading, so if anything comes up between now and the next council meeting, feel free to shoot us an email or give us a call, and we'll try to get you any answers that you need. Next item, R17 of 2020 comes from Public Works. Alder Person Bartlett.
I'm gonna move to table, and I don't know if I do it now or wait. Okay.
And a second first.
Very good.
And then once, you can table it, or you can postpone it, but if it's tabled, there's no discussion. If it's a postponement, then you can at least have a discussion.
Thank you.
Alder Person Bartlett.
I'm for Resolution 17 of 2020 regarding sidewalks for 2020 street reconstruction project, and move to approve.
Second by Alder Person Hirsch. Alder Person Bartlett.
Yeah, this relates to the sidewalks for the 2020 streets that are being reconstructed. So, we all know the existing policy now is that we add sidewalks on both sides of the streets. We've had discussions about that in the past, and this is because we're doing a deviation of the policy and not putting sidewalks in on both sides of the streets as well. So, if we give Director Scheel's time to walk through the sidewalks we've agreed to, or we've recommended so far. Staff had put together an initial plan and brought it to Public Works. We discussed and made some comments and changes, and this is what Public Works has recommended moving forward with.
Would you like, Rodney, to go through it?
Whenever I need to move to postpone, I will do that. So, if that's, whenever that's appropriate, that's what I intend to do. Thank you.
Okay, that's fine. You want to walk us through it, Rodney?
Sure. As proposed, the policy is, as was stated by Alder Bartlett, it requires sidewalks to be installed on both sides of every street that's reconstructed. On this map, it shows Prospect Street is being reconstructed all the way from Page Street to McKinley Street. What's being identified in the resolution is to deviate from that policy and to not install new sidewalks along the north side of Prospect Street in this one-block stretch. So, that's the first deviation that's recommended from the policy. The second deviation that's recommended from policy is on Sherman Street. Sherman Street is a one-block stretch from McKinley to Prospect. The resolution has written that no sidewalks would be installed on either side of Sherman Street at this time. But if and when McKinley Street receives sidewalks, that issue would be revisited. The third proposed deviation from policy is to, instead of installing sidewalks on both sides of Grant Street, to not install any sidewalks on the east side of Grant Street for that two-block stretch, but to extend the sidewalks on the west side of the street for the remaining segments from the mid-block of, between Grant and Prospect down to Taft Street on the west side only. So, that's the proposed deviations. As the note indicates, there'd still be spot replacements for defective sidewalks in the areas that are here as part of this project.
So, just a quick clarification. So, all the other street projects, we're not seeking any deviation from the policy?
That's correct.
Okay, so it's just these streets here that are in question?
Yep.
Okay, so I guess I would open it up for a discussion. We can either have a discussion, you can make a motion, or we could do both. We're not ready to vote on it yet. I'll certainly give you a heads up.
Thanks. I would, I guess I'd like to bring my motion to postpone this and open and seek a second on that, and then I can...
Okay.
...my argument as to why that should occur, hopefully. I'll give you a second, so you can...
All right, so there's a motion and a second by Jensen for postponement. Until when were you thinking?
I would think perhaps as long as the April, when we have a reconstituted Public Works Committee. However, we could do it sooner, maybe two meetings from now for Public Works, till that time, anyway. So, there would be an opportunity to present something to Public Works with respect to this. And I do have some thoughts as to why I believe this is appropriate, if anyone cares to hear them.
Sure.
Thank you. This body voted last fall to defund these projects. And my question is this, what's changed since then? Why is, why are we revisiting this? What has changed since then? Has traffic in that area suddenly increased drastically? No, it hasn't. Is it a thoroughfare? No, it's not. Has the unique character and landscape of this neighborhood changed since that vote? No, it has not. We had an inordinate number of residents appear for the hearing on this when we voted on this with respect to the SIP and with respect to whether we would defund these sidewalks. A good number of people showed up. All of them opposed. One yay in that group. There were a good number of contacts with members of this body from citizens in that neighborhood. neighborhood opposing this. My question is, have all of them suddenly changed their mind? Have they all suddenly contacted somebody and said, "By gosh, we made a mistake"? Wish, let me finish, please. Wish we'd said something differently, but I suspect that's not the case either. Again, the unique character of this neighborhood hasn't changed. The landscape in this neighborhood hasn't changed. Is cement suddenly preferable to trees, flowers, grass, and soil from an environmental standpoint? From a standpoint of climate change? Has cement now become a permeable surface that absorbs water so we needn't worry about all the increased runoff into the storm sewer that's right at the base of this, of Grant Street? And I'm sure there are other storm sewers that are affected by this as well going off to our, going off to the Aera? No, it's not the case. Does it suddenly make economic sense to do this when we are struggling in so many ways in this city to meet budgets? We are going to borrow money to do this. So, we're not only borrowing the money to do it, but we're paying interest on that money for streets that are absolutely opposed to that neighborhood, for streets that are not needed for any practical purpose whatsoever that benefits this community. It makes no sense.
Just clarification, you mean sidewalks?
Sidewalks, I apologize. Yes, I started to say streets. Sidewalks, sidewalks, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. You know, it just, again, I said this the last time we went through this. This servile devotion to this, to this plan, I realize there's some permutations in this proposal, but this, 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 this policy needs to change. I guess I would like an opportunity anyway to put something together, maybe two meetings from now, whatever. I'd like a little bit of time because I'm a busy person as, as we are all, as all of us are. But I'd like the opportunity to present something with respect to this. I oppose this, of course, I will continue to oppose it. I'd like to work on that underlying policy. I didn't realize that this was coming up where I'd have worked on and presented something, frankly, or sought to, present something to that committee prior to tonight. But we have to have some discretion here and we have to govern. We can't just simply allow a policy to dictate things or engineers to dictate things. That's our job. So, I'm going to ask that this be postponed. I'd like an opportunity to address it when I have more time to address it. That's my, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Person Hirsch and then Bartlett.
I guess I'm a little confused. I think this resolution gives Alder Person Riley everything that he asked for and everything that we voted on. It's just that it's a process that we needed to formally take it out of, you know, the street project, if I'm not right? Or, I mean, is this just clarifying what was discussed in that meeting or how has this changed? Because I'm confused. I thought you just kind of wrote up what Alder Person Riley had got his whole neighborhood to come to.
The deviations are close to what was, was agreed to at the CIP discussion. So, Sherman Street wouldn't get any sidewalks. This section of Prospect wouldn't get any new sidewalks. The only change is this identifies installation of sidewalks on one side of Grant Street instead of having them on both sides. And the discussion was to have no sidewalks reinstalled on Grant Street. So, Sherman and Prospect, I think, are consistent with that previous discussion. This would reinforce the policy, but deviate from it or sidewalks would only be extended the east on the western side of Grant Street for that one block and a half.
And then how was that decided, I guess? Was I to.
Again, the primary reason it went to Public Works, you recall last October that it was identified and reinforced that we were requesting a deviation from policy.
No, no, I'm just trying to understand.
And that's really what, that's really what the resolution is intended to do, to articulate and solidify the deviation from policy. And two of the three sections, I think, are very consistent with the previous discussion. The, the last remaining piece, I don't think, or I know is not consistent with that and that's the Grant Street segment.
And so, why was Grant Street signaled, why, I mean, I'm just trying to understand.
Well, the discussion, the discussion that was presented to the Public Works Committee is the extension of an existing sidewalk section that would create a continuous pedestrian route between Taft and Prospect. You have Prospect Street on the south here and Grant Street has sidewalks that extends two houses to this point already. And then there's no sidewalks on Grant Street down to Taft Street. Taft Street has sidewalks. So, the remaining link is three properties that don't have sidewalks on this side. There's certainly construction constraints to install sidewalks on the east side of this prop, or east side of Grant Street related to the proximity of structures here. That was recognized and therefore there was discussion about the rationale to extend the sidewalk only on one side.
Is there any, like, historic, or big oaks or any other big trees that would be affected on that side? I know there are a lot on the other side of the road and I know that was a big concern.
Yeah. There certainly are some trees there, but as you can see, at least in the draft plans that were even created a year ago when we started to discuss Grant Street, manipulating the flow of the sidewalk around existing trees.
Okay.
Were possible. That's in the northern block. In the southern block, there's a curvature to the sidewalk that's proposed to try to fit it in amongst existing trees as well, the larger mature trees as well.
No, I appreciate this because I'm actually for some sidewalks because I think for ADA for the city and for, you know, getting people, kids with strollers, little bikes, I think we do need sidewalks to get placed in place and minimizing them is fine.
Alder Person Bartlett.
Yeah, it asks that we not postpone this so we can move along with the design. This isn't the final part of it. There's still going to be some public information sessions, the design, other changes that can be made as, as needed. These are reasonable recommendations. We went through all this. We have a whole section of the area here that's not ADA compliant, doesn't have sidewalks for any kids, anyone using it, bikes, or walking in a safe manner. I know they say there's not a lot of traffic down there. Along Sherman Street there, we had a funeral home, you get lots of people walking along there, so it made sense to definitely have at least one side of the sidewalk. If you go up there during a funeral, there's tons of people walking straight down the street. This will help alleviate that a little bit, make it a little bit safer. I just think we need some kind of sidewalks here to help do that. This policy has been reviewed at least twice a year since I've been on the council and many times before I've been around. And we govern the entire city. We don't just govern our own neighborhood because we live there and make exceptions for our own properties. I think we do need to revisit. That's great, but we can't make an exception just because an alder lives there. I think these are reasonable recommendations. I'd like to move forward with them.
Alder Person, did you have something, or should I?
I just have a procedural point that I'd like to make. As I recall, the earlier discussion of the vote that was taken was on a funding issue, was on a borrowing issue. Is that correct, Mr. Friedel?
Yes.
Yes. It did not, there was no vote taken to amend the policy. There has been no council decision made, as I recall, to amend the existing policy. There's been no decision made as to where sidewalks should or shouldn't be constructed. But staff, hearing the discussion regarding the borrowing issue, has attempted to be responsive to that through this process of bringing back a proposed deviation from policy with respect to sidewalks. If no decision is made about deviating from the policy, then what you have is the policy. And so, I guess what, my question is, what's the schedule for bidding this project and having plans ready?
It'll be, it'll be out to bid in two months.
Okay, so if there's no change to policy, it goes out to bid and there's sidewalks everywhere, at least according to existing policy. Is that correct?
That's how we prepare them.
Okay.
Thank you. Alder Person Riley and then Hailey.
Thank you. Thank you. Just for the sake of clarification, I think Rodney did properly articulate this honestly. We voted to defund all of this in this neighborhood, all of it, not just a part of it. We voted to defund all of it. Now, council is suggesting, well, that doesn't matter because we still have a policy, but if there's no money to build them because this council defunded it, I don't think that matters much. Further, all I'm asking for is this, give me an opportunity to work on this policy, see if I can get anything done with the Public Works Committee on this particular policy. But honestly, I don't know what the argument is that you have to change the policy completely if this council says, "We're not going to put the money into this." And this council said, "We're not going to put the money into this." And Alder Person Bartlett, who I respect and I really like, I think it's a low blow. I had my entire neighborhood come out against these sidewalks, in this whole neighborhood. There are two really big grand trees where these sidewalks are planted and I just heard Director Shields say that it's possible to deviate around those. It's possible, but they not, he's not saying they are going to or that they can. It's just possible. So, that is still something that's open, I guess, for consideration. So, I, you know, one, you saw the response to these sidewalks in this neighborhood. You saw the people come out and say they do not want these. They think it is bad for the environment. They think it's bad for the neighborhood. They think it is unnecessary. And I happen to agree with them. Yes, I do happen to live in the neighborhood, but that doesn't mean I lose the right to represent my constituents on issues like this. Thank you.
Sure, and before I go, Alder Person Hailey, you know, some of the arguments I just heard were the same arguments we heard in October and I really haven't seen an effort to change the policy since we had that budget conversation. So, I don't know where it's postponing that it's really going to change anything. We've had several months to address the policy and nobody has come forward to do that, even though I personally sent out suggestions that I had to council members of what we may be able to do to change that policy. So, I guess I'm not really buying that argument. We do make an effort all the time to save trees in many neighborhoods and been very successful doing that and we would continue to do that here. My issue with this particular stretch is, to me, sidewalks are kind of like trails. You want them to go somewhere and you want to have a continuous loop. If we don't finish this section, we really have sidewalks going to nowhere and that really doesn't serve the greater public interest. And I think that's what we're elected to do. So, from my point of view, I would support the policy and on this particular issue here, I would, I would support continuing the sidewalks on the one side of the road as proposed. Did you have a clarification, Attorney Dr. B?
Yeah, and, and, and I don't mean to, I'm not trying to make this difficult. In the October meeting, I think I attempted to make the point that the, the decision was not to defund the project. The decision was whether to approve borrowing. So, and, and, and so, so I, I don't know exactly how that played out in the actual borrowing, but I tried to express at the time the fact that there was still going to be a need to address the policy decision about where you want sidewalks or where you don't want sidewalks. The only point I'm trying to make is, I would encourage the council to make the decision on a schedule that coincides with the bidding of the project. Because if there's a delay, staff is really caught between a rock and a hard place. They've got a policy that says one thing, but a potentially postponement on a decision as to whether to deviate from that policy or not. And I don't know how, I think that makes it very difficult to proceed with the planning and the bidding of the project. So, I, I would suggest that it's important to, to make a decision and not to delay.
I had Alder Person Hailey was next.
I was going to ask about the money. Since the borrowing was not approved, where's this coming from? Is it in the budget?
We haven't borrowed the money yet. So, this will take place in April, May-ish. From what I remember of the conversations was we would address this as we worked on the process this time of the year after the design was there and the borrowing is all later. We kind of worked through that through the bidding process and all of that.
I was not, I voted against Aldo Riley's initial thing because I didn't think going after the funding was the right way to go about this because we're, we're debating it again now and probably will in the, when that money comes up, if when that money comes up again.
Okay. Alder Person Legaki, did you have your hand up?
I did. My question is that at this util, public, public utilities meeting.
Public Works.
Public Works meeting. Was it even announced or clear to the people that, that this, I mean, I know it was kind of clear that we need to change the policy, but I felt, I, I voted with it. I, I think there are protections here that, that I, I do think that this is an exceptional area. And this appears to be presenting a, a change to that vote that was in the majority. And so, I find myself saying, are we going about this in the right, right ways? Not that I know enough about the details of all of these committees and how they coalesce, but I, in good faith, I'm looking at this going, I felt confident in my vote, I still do. And, and yet I understand the need to look at these policies, but we were pretty clear on what we had said. So, now they're offering this change. I'm, I guess I'm confused by that.
Okay. I think Planning Director Shields might want to try to clarify that and then Alder Person Borisma and then Riley.
Thank you.
I think two-thirds of this resolution solidifies the, the direction of the council from the previous interest in not having sidewalks installed in the two locations as shown on Sherman Street and on Prospect. I think the policy is a, is a good policy and I think the situation where you consider special circumstances based and being proposed as such is, is a very legitimate process as opposed to creating a policy that you might bump up against something else in the future. We've bumped up to this, up against this in last year's project and we proposed deviations there. You'll recall Lowell Street. We proposed not to put sidewalks on the south side for some of the similar situations, not enough real estate for public improvement, you know. So, so there was reasons that we proposed and the council agreed to deviations from the policy. I think this is a similar fashion that's being proposed where you're, you're being, it's being recommended to deviate from policy and two-thirds of what is being proposed, I believe, is significantly consistent with what you, you discussed last October. It's the piece on, on Grant Street that I think is different.
And I, I agree with you and that's the part I'm questioning. If, if, it's like the chicken and the egg. If, if that group that wanted that policy looked at and it's been hard to change and many people have tried to change it over time. But, but this is still riding in with that even though I believe the volition and the intent was to have all of this area special.
Thank you.
Alder Person Borisma.
Yeah, the resolution ten, R17 twenty, twenty twenty, a little bit misleading in terms of, it's not, not, not that it was intentional, but the vote was four to zero with one abstention and I was at abstention. And the reason for my abstention on that is because that's, that's basically my neighborhood and the constituents that came out that evening to discuss this issue were pretty clear, almost to a person, not quite. And in fact, one of the people who live on Grant Street was one who was kind of iffy about that issue, as I recall. So, I had two reasons for abstention. I just wanted to, you know, come forth and tell you why. The first one is because I think the constituents in my, in that neighborhood were pretty clear about what they wanted for that neighborhood, which was not to have sidewalks on both sides or any, actually any of the sidewalks because of the nature of, of the neighborhood. And the second part of it was because I did think about this issue of what we had talked about at council of not, either not funding or not borrowing for the funding for this project. And, and I have to be very honest that I was pretty pleased with the fact that, that there was a proposal that cut out at least two-thirds of what was going to be sidewalks and the fact that not only that, but if they would be on both sides based on our current, the current way we're doing things. So, I was pretty pleased about that. But again, you know, with the, with the, with the issue of the vote that we had, it was pretty clear from the council that we, that the council decided that they did not want to borrow to fund this project for any sidewalks in this neighborhood. I think I have raised this, I'll bet you six or seven times at Public Works and I've been on Public Works for a long time, that we need, we need, we need not only just every time we have these issues that we deviate from the, we, we vote to deviate from the policy, we really need to finally and concretely, concretely address this issue of whether we have, whether we have a continuing thing about requiring sidewalks on both sides or not. What's the purpose of, I mean, what's the process to deviate from it? We need to do that. And so, honestly, I, I would, I would suggest that we do give Mr. Riley, along with other people who may want to have input into this, to eventually go to. to eventually go to Public Works to give him some time to, to do some proposal about this. And, and I think it's a little, it's a little unfair for us to say that Mr. Riley shouldn't have, even though he's, he's directly affected this, that he shouldn't have some right to, to this whole issue. I honestly represent as a constituent, as constituent, Mr. Riley as well. So I think, I think just to be fair, if, you know, we should not be criticizing Mr. Riley for having, I think, a legitimate issue of wanting to address this issue in depth because it's been a mess for a long time. I strenuously disagree with having a policy that we have to have sidewalks on both sides and that at every turn we have to deviate from our policy and put Rodney and the rest of the city staff in a bad spot. So I, I think we should, I think we should really address this issue. Maybe this is the time to finally have some resolution and actually address this issue. That's all I have to say.
Alder Person Riley?
Thank you, Mayor. First to council, I said this at the time of our fall meeting. If you do not fund it, it doesn't happen. So to parse this, well, the policy hasn't changed. By gosh, well, my lord, what are we gonna do? We said we're not gonna fund these. The majority of this council said that. To Alder Person Legaki's point, and I appreciate it, basically, this is an end around to veto what we did in the fall. We already dealt with this and we said we're not gonna fund these streets in this neighborhood. And this is now another kick the cat, an end around, so to speak, to try and veto that vote, in essence. To change that vote, as though it never occurred at all. Mayor, honestly, I think that we have time to deliberate this. To suggest that I knew somehow that this was gonna come back, that this would be resurrected in this fashion is ridiculous. I did not. I was, shock might be too strong a term, but not far off from what I felt when I saw this, that this was coming back in this fashion tonight. So had I had any notion that that was gonna happen, I would have not worried about the holidays, would have not worried about the fact that I am an attorney and I'm really busy and that I do things in the city as well. And I would have just dedicated every second of every day to this policy. That stinks. So now that I know that this is gonna come back as an end around, I will certainly dedicate sufficient time to at least bring something to Public Works and then we can debate it further once I've done that. This policy is awful. It's ancient. And we need to stop abiding by it as though it makes sense in every, in every application. It's ridiculous. So I think that's an unfair criticism, frankly, Your Honor. I think I deserve to have the chance to work on this. I know that there are other Alder Persons who will help me with this. And I merely asking that we postpone this a sufficient amount of time to do that and that we not basically deprive the neighbor, the citizens of the neighborhood, et cetera, of what they earned by a vote in the fall by doing an end around and coming back with it in this fashion. Thank you.
Did you have something?
I would, I would just offer, as a staff person who's trying to put together plans that we're presenting to the community and getting out to bed, if there is support for the action that was taken last fall, you can, you can modify this resolution by changing the Grant Street and proposing a deviation from policy to not install any sidewalks, any new extension of sidewalks on Grant Street. Because what I don't wanna have to do is I don't wanna have to have our engineers design sidewalks on both sides of Sherman Street right now. When universally, I believe everybody does not want sidewalks on both sides of Sherman Street. I don't want our staff to be designing sidewalks on the north side of Prospect Street as shown here. If we don't have to be. If there's consensus on some of those pieces, I'd like to not have to have us put our community through those areas and just debate those going forward and have our engineers spend time putting together the plans for such.
So just to summarize that, if you vote to postpone, that really means that we're gonna design everything. If you decide you don't wanna postpone it, you could make an amendment to the resolution and pull that section out of Grant Street. Which is what I would suggest we do, but it's certainly up to the council to decide that. Who was first? I'm sorry.
I think Alder said something before me.
Who did?
No, you were first.
Okay. Yeah, I was gonna ask about the, whether postponing would be, would throw off the, the plans, because I know this is meant to coincide with streetwork as well, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think that if the majority still wants to kill this sidewalk plan, the best move is to amend tonight.
Alder Person Legaki?
Alder Hirsch, not Hirsch, Lisa Reeves. And Matt and Sid. I, I want to amend. I about to make a motion to do so if Alder Riley would like me to, but before doing so, I, I wanna ask you just about that meeting. A little bit more. Who was all there? How did you come to this adding? Any, I don't, I don't, I think your, your intentions were good to try to think, but it continues policies, it's reasonable, it's, is it really important? Why on the west side for that? That's the kind of information that I'm wondering if, if you could speak to before we, we act.
I think Alder Person Bartlet can probably answer that.
Well, yeah, that's in the meeting minutes who was there, myself, Alder Borzma and Alder Reeves and the mayor and also planning department as well. And Alder Mijaski was not at that time, but we did discuss this, trying to meet the intent of what the council wanted, as well as looking at safety and ADA compliance and what made sense with existing sidewalks that were already there. We weren't trying to go against the wishes of the council. We were trying to improve it for where we know people walk and where they, we could use the accessibility and at least give people some options if they wanted to ride bikes or for young children or walking on those sidewalks, they wouldn't have something there. We also looked at removing as much concrete as we could and we did look at that. And that's, yeah, we definitely wanted to get rid of some of that along Prospect Street, so we looked at what made sense. We also talked about saving as many, the trees, those large growth, old growth trees that are there. We did talk about saving those as well. We don't wanna cut those down for sure. So we did discuss all of that. So that will come out in the planning, when they do the engineering design, to make sure that they can, they can do that. If they didn't, then I think the vote would have been different. We wanna put them, we're not gonna put them through the old growth trees. But we discussed a lot of the issues that have been brought up tonight.
Thank you, and hoping you can speak more to why that extension on, on Grant.
So I did the same thing before the last public meeting that I did the prior meetings, which was go out there again and get my, get out of my car and walk around a little bit. And I came to the Public Works meeting and I said, you know, there's at least one giant tree on Grant Street. And I said, if that's coming down, I, you know, I'm not in favor. I don't wanna take down a big tree. I also have walked that neighborhood a lot and walked up Grant Street and ended up at the dead sidewalk with my dog and schlepped back down. And so for me, continuing that sidewalk seemed to make sense, but not if we were to lose the tree. So my question was going to be, at what point will we know, can they do that? Because I would make an amendment or, or however we need to do that, that if the trees are coming down, then I feel differently. And I would halt my, you know, I would like to, for that to be brought back for consideration. And I don't, that was gonna be a question. Do the engineers know that before? Or is it, are they in the midst of the project and then say, whoops?
As, as identified in this plan, they intend to design this to preserve the trees that these go around. The large one that you spoke of on the corner of McKinley and, McKinley and Grant is located on the screen at this point. You can see they're, they're working their plans to deviate around it. And then there's also some more mature trees on the southern, on the northern end of this Taff Street. So there's an area here where they're, they're working to go around those as well. So that, that is the design that they believe can be accomplished. They're continuing to refine the design. They're looking for direction. Well, we're trying to provide it to them.
So to answer the question, for me, that would be a deal breaker if those were coming down. And that was the, that's why I changed my mind when I was able to go back and take another look, because that one stretch made sense to me, based on my personal experience when I've been out walking.
Alder Person Hirsch?
I guess I commend Rodney and Public Works for coming up with, I think this plan is a really good compromise. It doesn't give the neighborhood everything they want, but the neighborhood isn't the full community. We have to look at the full community. My sidewalk in front of my house isn't just for me and my two neighbors. It's for people to get from Main Street up to St. Anne's, to Scotland, to the high school, to other schools. It's a conduit. You can't just, you know, say that, oh, my neighborhood doesn't want sidewalks. This is a very special neighborhood and I think what Rodney and the Public Works have taken everybody's viewpoint puts, and made a great compromise. So people that do have special needs can get from point A to point B without having to, like Alder Person Reeves said, you schlepp up, you gotta schlepp back because there's no place to go. And as somebody who walks neighborhoods a lot with my dog, it's a pain to come to a dead end in the middle of a road. This isn't what our community wanted. When we did the comprehensive plan survey, our community wanted sidewalks so they could get from point A to point B. Yes, may not be environmentally sound and that's really, you know, but it is environmentally sound. So to get people walking instead of using their cars, so there's a trade-off. You know, if people are gonna bike more because we have more sidewalks and little kids can learn on a bike, it's positive to get people outdoors. So I don't think that we need to postpone this. I don't think we need to amend this. I think, I wanna commend Alder Person Bartlet and Rodney and the rest of the group to, they did a great job. And if our engineers are, and I know a couple of years ago, a neighbor had a problem with trees. And we worked and those trees were saved. We, you know, Rodney and his engineers are fantastic. They know what the community wants and we've saved a lot of trees over the year. And so I think, I, I trust them, that they all do the right thing. And I think this is a great plan for the whole community, not just for this neighborhood.
So what I'd like to do is limit the next comments to whether or not we wanna move forward with the postponement or not, because that's a motion on the table.
May I ask a question on that?
Sure.
Thank you. Rodney, what is the timeframe by which you would need to have something in place that at least could be used as a, to contextualize what we had already voted on and denied? How much time would you need for that? I mean, when, when is dropped dead with respect to all of the process, if you could give me an idea?
We're preparing plans to take to open house on the 13th of February.
Okay. I, I would then withdraw my motion in favor of Councilperson Legaki on the anticipated motion to amend this to remove the sidewalks or?
I believe it has to be voted on, doesn't it? Can't withdraw.
Well, technically, the motion's been made in seconds before the body. You can either vote on it or if there's a withdrawal and everybody's happy with that, that's fine with me too.
Did you second that one?
I seconded. I'm fine with withdrawing.
Okay, so we're gonna withdraw the motion and we're anticipating an amendment? Is that what I'm hearing? Who wants to make it?
I just have a comment.
On what?
If you want to go ahead. I'd, I'd prefer to look for the motion, if you don't mind.
Okay, let's make it quick so we can get some business done.
I usually, I, I seconded Tim's postponement, because I wanted to get the discussion going on this.
Bet you did. You were successful.
Yeah, I did. I guess, I guess I was successful for a change. I, I have to say, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm all in favor of making some changes to this policy. I absolutely agree with that. I think most of us do agree that there needs to be some changes to it. Policy needs to be changed so that we can, we can have more leeway. So that we aren't in such a restrictive policy. It isn't such a restrictive policy. That said, the resolution that I see in front of me right now fits what I would perceive the policy changes to be. In that it, it takes into consideration the trees, the environment that's around it. It takes into consideration the idea of having a continuous sidewalk, at least in some areas. It takes into consideration, like Gene was saying about ADA, which I'm very in tune to. So as it sits right now, I would be in favor of this policy, but we really do need to, of this change here. This resolution. But I really wanna see us work on, on getting this policy changed so that we can all agree on that.
So I'm looking for, you're gonna make the motion to amend?
I have a comment I wanna make about the motion before I do.
Okay, so right now we're working on the main motion, which is the resolution.
So I'm, I'm looking at the last whereas, where you put out the deviation from the policy has been recommended as follows. I am trying to seek also some middle ground. And rather than striking that sidewalk will only be installed on the west side, I'm not proposing that. What I would like to put out there, with a little input before I officially put it out there, is to keep that. But to add that, in, I don't have the language quite yet, but the idea is I believe that the citizens who live there spoke clearly. I think we heard them. I think we're protecting trees. I, I think there's, there's a wild, more garden there that's not necessarily trees, but would be disrupted. I wanna protect that kinda stuff with what exists. There's a lot of good historical character there. We walk there too. And those streets are rarely traveled. I do think we have an exception here and I want their input. I don't necessarily want, want to kabosh the idea of any sidewalk there. But I don't know where we're gonna get the money from it, but to honor the work that your committee did, but, but so, so I'd like to have an and to that whereas, rather than be so exclusionary. That perhaps the, the language that could be offered to that is sidewalk will only be installed on the west side of Grant Street from Prospect Street to Taff Street in conjunction with the property owners. And perhaps that wild area, it still gets continued, but maybe it's not the same concrete. Perhaps it's something else that's talked about. Some surface that would be more fitting for that. And maybe they do want the sidewalk. I remember when some of those property owners said, please, not both sides. So that's what I'm suggesting. I guess I'm saying that it could be done there in conjunction with the property owners. And I think I got my idea across. Questions or comments? Is this wise?
I'm trying to understand if, if that's a motion and if it really is.
I didn't move it yet. I just put it out there because I'm, I'm.
I mean, I think that there's always an effort to work with the neighbors on these types of issues. And to put it into a motion, I don't, I don't know if that's ambiguous or what that is.
It's really ambiguous, because it's hard, you know.
I know.
Gene, can I, can I?
Sure.
Can I offer a motion to amend, please? Thank you. I would just move to amend that we remove the sidewalk construction from this altogether and take a vote on it.
So that would include all of them?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Borzma. Any discussion on that?
Is all three of those points under that whereas then being taken out?
I think that's the intent of the motion.
Couple of those points are removing sidewalk, so.
Right.
Clarify. So.
For the construction of new sidewalks, move to amend this so that we are removing authority for the construction of new sidewalks in that neighborhood. Thank you.
How about if constructing where the existing sidewalks are?
Really, well, you're trying, everything was okay the way it was presented except for Grant Street.
Well, Grant Street and any other sidewalks in that neighborhood, we are constructing new sidewalks.
They were already included.
Okay.
That was the only section that we were gonna construct.
Okay.
So I, my understanding of the motion would be to add Grant Street to that list.
To exclude.
Right.
Thank you.
Is, is, is that the understanding?
That's my understanding, as long as, yep.
So clarifying, it reads, whereas deviation from the policy has been recommended as follows. That first sentence there doesn't exist. And the first one would be the narrow concrete strip. So that first goes away. So that first goes away.
Well, actually, if I could, the whereas stays the same. The recommendation hasn't changed. You want to go down to the very bottom, be it resolved? That's where you want to, that's where you want to make your change.
Oh.
So where it says, right now, it says sidewalk will only be installed on the west side of Grant Street and will not be installed on, so I guess you have to figure out how to tweak that language.
May I ask a question of the director? Just for clarification. Mayor, thank you. Rodney, you were here for that vote. You know what the intention was. You know it was defunded by this council. Can you tell me what in here, I know you made some adjustments with respect to not both sides, et cetera, but is there anything in your proposal here that we voted to defund at that meeting in October, I believe it was October? Is there anything other than Grant Street that we voted to defund at that time?
My understanding of that direction was we were still gonna replace defective sidewalk. So if there's a section out there that's got cracks and it needs to be replaced, that that's getting done.
Okay.
This, the only change from what my understanding was, was the installation of sidewalks on that west side of Grant Street.
Okay. So your, so your understanding of what you're proposing here in the resolution would be that it doesn't necessarily defeat the vote, it's how I'd put it, that we took in fall, rather it would, if we remove Grant Street, it doesn't defeat that. It merely authorizes the repair of where repairs are needed to exist in sidewalks?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I believe that's true.
So I think all you have to do is change the word "only" to, um-
To not.
Or to not be in-
Sidewalk will not be installed.
Yeah, I think you only have to change one word there. Is that-
Right, thank you, I understand.
Simple enough?
Thank you. Yes, it is. Thank you.
Even for me?
Yeah. Could somebody read that for me?
Sure.
Is there a motion to that effect?
I think we did have the amendment from Riley and seconded by Boersma. We're just tweaking the language.
Sidewalk would, will not be installed on either side?
Right, on the west side.
Either side.
Yeah, on the east or west side, or either side, whatever you want to say.
Mm-hmm.
Basically, we're removing-
Removing the word "only" and putting "not."
Right. Removing all-
It's both sides of West Street, of Grant, east and west, or both sides.
Okay, got it.
All right. Holly says she has it.
Thank you.
Both sides, no sidewalks. That's the intent.
Thank you.
Okay. Open it up for questions and comments on that amendment.
Do we get a second?
Yeah, we had a second by Boersma. Go ahead, Sid.
Yeah, and Gene had asked members of the Public Works, you know, what they, you know, what happened that evening. And again, I did abstain from my vote, but I would say that there was a bit of a celebratory mood to having the ability to change and modify our plans a bit, as proposed by Rodney. I think we were, I think we were all fairly pleased with the fact that we were making some progress. So I was concerned about the tree, as Lisa was. There was the one big, the big tree. There are a few other ones, but I live in that neighborhood, and some of them down the road on Grant Street seem, seem to be kind of scrubbed trees and bushes. So I wasn't, I wasn't so concerned about that part of it, but the big trees I was concerned about. And again, I think, I think the mood on that evening was, you know, fairly, fairly positive that we were actually making some progress in this area, so. I don't know if everybody agrees with me.
Any other questions or comments on the amendment? Okay, so all in favor of the amendment, say aye.
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 And those opposed to the amendment?
No.
No.
I think the ayes have it.
Can you do a roll call?
Do a roll call.
Can do a roll call.
Boersma?
Aye.
Caravelo?
Aye.
Yes.
Zoom?
Aye.
Haley?
No.
Hirsch?
No.
Jensen?
Oh.
Legaki?
Aye.
Reeves?
No.
Riley?
Aye.
Schumacher?
Aye.
Bartlett?
No.
That motion carries on a vote of six to five.
Okay, so that, does that take us back to the original motion, or is that it?
I think now we're back to the original motion to vote on the resolution as amended.
As it was just amended.
Yep.
Yeah, we're, okay. Does everybody understand that? So basically, we're voting on the same thing.
Yep.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Ayes have it. All right. Next item is R eighteen of 2020. This involves curbs, gutters, and sidewalks on Main Street. So hopefully, this one will be a little bit less stressful. Alder Person Schumacher.
Sidewalk.
All right. R eighteen, 2020, waiving special assessments for curb and gutter and sidewalk work on Main Street as part of the 2020 project from Page Street to Fifth Street. So moved.
Second. Is that, who said second? Jensen?
Right.
Okay. Go ahead, Alder Person Schumacher.
This is in coordination with the reconstruction of Main Street that will start up this year. It was thought to use some of the, some of the TIF for increment in order to offset some of the sidewalks and then kind of like bring the, make them look a little bit better, right? Rodney, is that what thought is?
Maybe if I can just elaborate, the downtown district from Page, of Main Street, from Page Street to about Fifth Street or Sixth Street, we've got some rehab work that's gonna be funded as part of the 2020 work, mainly sidewalks, some spot curb and gutter replacement. We're also gonna be doing some lifting of sidewalks. This area was under special assessments about, less than about 20 years ago, as part of the reconstruction efforts downtown. We see this rehab effort as an opportunity to recognize that the downtown district is held to a slightly different standard than some of the other areas of the community. And as such, we have the opportunity to utilize TIF dollars from the increment that's been generated in this district to allow this work to continue in our, in our minds without assessing property owners within a short cycle to rework those areas again. So our hope is to allow this work to continue on Main Street from Page to Sixth Street without special assessments for that type of rehab work.
Okay, any questions or comments? Here are none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. R nineteen also comes from Finance. Alder Person Schumacher.
R nineteen, 2020, authorizing and directing the proper city official to enter into the task order amendment for engineering services related to the Glacier Moraine Drive project. So moved.
Second. Second by Alder Person Jensen. Alder Person Schumacher.
This is just an adjustment in there, and it actually realized a $50,000 savings. So these are already budgeted and looked at, engineering costs, and it was just a different amount.
Okay. Any questions or comments on this one? Alder Person Haley. To clarify, this is adding services to the contract and adding costs, but it still comes in under budget, right?
Yep.
Yes. It comes under what we'd originally budgeted for the engineering services.
Doesn't happen too often like that, does it? Any other questions or comments?
That caught us in Finance, too. Wait a minute.
Just how you planned it.
Just exactly, yep.
All right. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. Item fifteen, discussion of possible action regarding funding up to $10,000 from contingency fund for legal representation for liquor license proceedings and authorizing proper city officials to hire attorney Al Reuter, comes out of Finance Committee tonight. Alder Person Schumacher.
Have that specific order, or resolution in there?
I just read it.
Just being-
Okay, just being read in there.
Yeah, you can just move it. I saved you the trouble.
All right, so we will move the resolution that the mayor has stated. So moved.
Second. Second by Alder Person Jensen. I think we're gonna turn this one over to Attorney Dragney and Police Chief Leck.
We on item fifteen?
Yeah.
Great, you want me to?
Oh, you can go ahead, yeah, it's fine.
So a complaint has been filed with the Clerk's Office, filed by Chief Leck, seeking review and revocation of an alcohol beverage license for a Class B, combination Class B license for an establishment in the city. If anyone's interested in the details regarding the complaint, I believe the Clerk has copies of the complaint with her, she can provide to you. This will trigger a process that will require a hearing before the Public Safety Committee. They will make a report and recommendation to the council, and then the council will have to make a decision about what to do. An attorney in my office, our plan is for an attorney in my office to present the case to the committee and to the council, essentially serve as a, the attorney for Chief Leck presenting the charges. We've recommended or discussed whether or not there would be a desire for the committee and the council to have legal representation during that process. And the challenge is that we can't have the same attorney serving as both the prosecutor and the advisor to the body making the decision. And so the request to counsel is to authorize, the $10,000 figure is the estimated expense to fund both the legal services for prosecuting the case and for an attorney, an outside attorney, to advise the committee and the council during the course of the proceedings. I have been in touch with Attorney Al Reuter, who has experience with this sort of thing, checked his availability. He said he is available and would be willing to do the job if the city would like to retain him. So the question before the council is whether to authorize funding both the legal fees necessary to present the case to the, to the committee and the council and to provide legal representation during that proceeding to the committee and the council.
Anything you want to add, Chief?
No, he did a very good job of explaining it. The process is already started. The paperwork was filed with the Clerk's Office, and so it's just a necessary thing that we need to do, and it needs to move forward.
I will also mention to you, I know I talked to Attorney Reuter. If he is retained, he will be sending a letter to the members of the committee and to the council advising you that your role in this matter is a quasi judicial role. And so please, I would suggest as well that, please don't be discussing this case with people. Don't be conducting your own kind of inquiry into what the situation is. Don't talk to the chief about it. Don't talk to me about it. You will have, if this motion is approved, you'll have your own separate independent counsel who will advise you on this case.
Alder Person Riley?
Thank you, Your Honor. One, does Holly, do you have available the complaint for review at this point?
Yes.
Ever submitted? Is it, do you have it available, I mean, literally available, like now?
She has paper copies in front of her.
Okay. Would it be possible for at least the members of the committee who are present to get a quick look at it, or is-
It's a public record. I think you can all have a copy.
Right. Quickly, please.
Groovy. I mean, I wouldn't, if I, if we could, and I don't want to take a long time, but yeah, I'd like to-
Good idea.
Thank you. And may I ask one more question, Mayor? Attorney Reuter, is he in your firm?
No, he's in a different firm.
Okay.
Independent. He's a municipal lawyer. I know he has been retained to serve in this very role in other cases, to represent committees, alcohol licensed committees who are hearing these kinds of cases.
Thank you.
Hang on one short.
Nope.
Sorry, I must take it.
Holly, would you want to let him know when that meeting is? That's February, what, February fifth?
Well, that, that part will be dependent on scheduling and service date.
Oh, okay.
Because those provisions kick in upon service of the summons.
We haven't got that done yet.
No, that isn't done yet. And then there's a time constraint that's put in there. Once it's served, the hearing has to be conducted between three and 10 days after service.
Initial thoughts or questions about, I'd kind of like to keep it to process more than anything. Alder Person Boersma?
I'd like to suggest that we return the, this document to Holly.
I think she has it.
Public record.
Public, yeah.
It is public?
Yeah. Yep, she has it. Anybody else have any thoughts, or otherwise? Alder Person Riley?
I apologize.
Sorry.
I just, and I don't know if this is appropriate with respect to the limitations to procedure, do we have any notion if the subject of this complaint intends to contest it, or has retained counsel to contest it, or?
We don't know.
We don't know, okay.
They have not been served yet.
Oh, okay. Well, that would make it difficult for them, wouldn't it?
If the complaint was filed with the clerk today, the committee will need to conduct a, have a meeting and issue a subpoena. And once it's served, then-
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Otherwise, there is a motion on the table. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries.
As the chair, just make sure, do you reiterate that this needs to be?
Yeah, anything else you want to say?
Yeah, just, please don't discuss this case with people, with others, because you will be sitting in judgment at some point, and it's important that you're able to give due process to both of the parties who will be presenting to you.
Thank you.
All right. R twenty-two of 2020 comes from the Finance Committee earlier this evening. Alder Person Schumacher.
R twenty-two, 2020, approving the real estate purchase and sale agreement buy-in between Ronald Grosso and the City of Stoughton, Wisconsin, for 4.43 acres of property located on Glacier Moraine Drive in tax incremental District Number Six. So moved.
Second. Second by Alder Person Jensen. Alder Person Schumacher, anything?
I think we've, have we seen this one at council before, or at least?
No, we went through Finance, what?
Just us?
Three times.
Yeah.
And the recommendation is coming out of Finance tonight.
Yeah.
So the council isn't really in the loop on it, and that's why we put the opportunity in there to go into closed session. I would look to Attorney Dragney to let us know when you think the appropriate time would be to do that. I think Rodney's gonna start out by doing an overview of the business park lots.
On the top of your pages, sorry for the orientation, but Glacier Moraine Drive runs east to west on the top of the page. Progress Lane is on the right-hand side of the page with Alliant Energy here. You'll recall Exclusively Roses is in the process of acquiring Lot One on the corner of Progress and Glacier Moraine. The lot that you're working with now is Lot Three for the Grosso sale. And this, this will be a CSM that will be acting on, at Plan Commission and Council in February, so.
Any initial questions? Otherwise, kind of the history of this is, we were approached by the Grossos. They have some properties currently in the business park where they do what we call business incubators, which are typically in office with garages that are attached. They're looking to expand their operation. This is kind of the layout here, and all this would be subject to the recommendation approval through the Planning Commission and City Council. We're planning, I think, taking this to the Plan Commission next month for some recommendations. But this is kind of the layout, if you want to elaborate on it a little bit, Rodney?
Just to restate what might have been presented previously, we've got- um, eight buildings that are planned to be constructed on the site. Sorry for the orientation, now Glacier Moraine is on the right-hand side of your page. One access point off of Glacier Moraine Drive, uh, five buil- uh, five buildings in the east-west configuration and three north-south configuration. All are considered to be multi-tenant, leasable space. Um, the area of this facility, um, we're working through this right now, but they're working on their stormwater and site plan, it's planning that would go through the Plan Commission for action. Their intentions are to build approximately two buildings each year for the next four or so years to fulfill their, their commitment for value out here.
So a couple of meetings ago, we kinda ran through with the Finance Committee the way we wanna structure the deal, because they're looking at, um, two buildings a year over a four-year period, and we wanted to know financially what that would look like. Jayman walked the Finance Committee through what that would look like, presented it to elders to get their blessing. We sat down with the Grossos yesterday to make sure that they understood, um, how it was, how the, how it was gonna be arranged in the, uh, in the offer to purchase, and everybody seems to be on board with it. If it's something that the council wants to look at, I think potentially we could talk about that in closed session. So that's why we, gave us the flexibility to go in there. It's just a question of, you know, how deep you guys wanna go into. We do have the recommendation to move forward with it from the Finance Committee. It's up to you guys on how much information you'd like to have. All the person Boersma.
Because it involves money, because it involves a per- a purchase, um, I, I do, I would feel more comfortable if I did go into a, into closed session.
Okay.
So, in that-
Does that sound appropriate, Matt?
Sorry, what's the issue?
To go into closed session to talk about the financial arrangement and the offer to purchase?
If you wish.
Okay.
So, um, I propose a, um, council go into closed session per statute, uh, state statute eighteen point, uh, eight-five, parent E, N parent, for the purposes of deliberating or renegotiating the purchase of public properties, investing in public funds, or, or conducting other specified public business, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons deem a closed session necessary, the city council, uh, may convene, reconvene in open session to discuss and take action on the subject matter, discuss in closed session. I so moved.
Second, Matt.
Second by all the person Schumacher. Any discussion? And we need to do a roll call vote to go into closed session?
Caravelo?
Aye.
Dume?
Aye.
Haley?
Aye.
Hirsch?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Legaki?
Aye.
Reeves?
Aye.
Riley?